And good evening, welcome to the Mayor and City Council Combined Workshop Voting Session for the month of October. We'll begin with our pledge of flag. I'll ask Mayor Portem Vigliotti to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, undivided, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mayor Portem. Let the records reflect that all council members are present and accounted for this evening. We'll begin with our review and approval of the minutes from the September 8th and September 13th regular meetings. I'll ask first if there is a motion for the minutes.
Motion to approve both sets of minutes from the September 8th and 13th meetings.
And do I have a second? I have a motion to approve from Mayor Portem Vigliotti and a second from Councilman Fuller. I'll ask if there's any additions or corrections that you'd like to see made to the minutes as they're presented to you this evening. All right, I take it everyone believes that they are accurate? And any further discussion? Hearing none on the motion to approve the minutes. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Say nay. All right, I will now ask of each member of council if they have any conflicts of interest on anything on the agenda this evening.
Yes, sir.
Very good. We will move on to public comment pertaining to non-agenda items. Anything you don't see on the agenda, I will accept brief public comment on.
I have good news. I'm not going to talk about a nonprofit foundation tonight. New subject. Two or three months ago, someone called up and talked about speeding cars on some street. I just happened to pick it up when I was watching my TV and the end result was the person was told to go talk to the police about it. So, but I think I have a different answer for that. And I think if people are speeding on streets, residential streets especially, I think that a speed hump or a speed bump would take care of it nicely. So I called up the company that put them in Carol Vista and it's called Atlantic Maintenance. And a speed hump for a city street would cost $2,300. That would include putting a sign at each end of the speed hump that says, "Slow down" or your headlights will get rattled out. And so I'd like to propose that you consider doing that wherever you got this complaint about people speeding on a city street, residential street really. And I think this would get you some really good press. I haven't heard any good press about the council in quite a while, but when you started changing the rate for water, people kind of went over the top complaining. So I would say if you'd like some good press, and I think you could get votes out of it too, seeing as you're politicians. And so that's my suggestion. And here's the company, the phone number, and the price.
All right, thank you very much. Any other comment on non-agenda items this evening? All right, with nothing else, the next item on the agenda is intended to be a public hearing for the Community Development Block Grant. Information from today is that we're not going to be able to meet the deadline, therefore the public hearing would not be of any value at this point. Expect to have another one in the spring prior to the next deadline. So with that, I'm going to strike the public hearing from the agenda for the evening. Up for adoption this evening, we have ordinance 05-2021, Amendment to Community Village Zone. And let's begin with discussion, since we're kind of combining everything, and then we'll see if a motion comes out of that discussion. I'll open the floor. Anyone have anything to say about ordinance 05-2021?
I have a question or maybe a suggestion, as it were?
Go ahead, Mayor Portem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the first page of the ordinance, the sixth whereas toward the second to the last from the bottom, it states, "Whereas the city would like to make use of the Development Rights and Responsibilities Agreement as a tool to address the shed and outbuilding issue on a case-by-case basis for projects in the community village zone." Linguistically, with the second line there, the shed and the outbuilding issue, I'd like to make a request that we alter the language there, because by saying the shed and the outbuilding issue makes it seem as, I don't know, like it seems like it's more of a, I'm not quite sure how you would explain it. But the terminology that I would like to replace specifically the shed and the outbuilding issue with is the prospective for future shed and outbuilding requests, because it makes it seem like this particular, this is a specific thing rather than something that may arise again in the future. And so by replacing the shed and outbuilding issue with the term or the phrase, the prospective for future shed and outbuilding requests, I think would more suitably deal with the situation at hand.
Okay, so the suggestion from the Mayor Portem is to reword the sixth whereas to read, "Whereas the city would like to make use of the Development Rights and Responsibilities Agreement as a tool to address the prospective for future shed and outbuilding requests on a case-by-case basis for projects in the community village zone and..."
More comprehensive, that's what I was looking for. It seems more comprehensive that way.
Very good. I'll ask to the clerk, do you have, do you need that read again?
No, I think I have it.
You have it, very good. All right, I'll ask council, is there any comments on that? Your thoughts and opinions?
And just so I'm clear, at times I'm a simple lad. So this ordinance is merely acknowledging that there will be times in the future in which there can be agreement based on the DARA moving forward.
Yes. Yes, it's simply saying that for this to occur, it would have to be incorporated in a DARA for that development.
Thank you, sir.
Very good. All right, any other conversation we wish to have about this ordinance? Okay, I'm going to entertain a motion. I'm going to ask that if you wish to include the Mayor Portem's suggestion, that you specify the amended ordinance as your motion. If you do not wish to include that, just say, "As presented."
No, to approve.
The amended ordinance?
The amended ordinance, number 052021, Amendment to the Community Village Zone.
Very good. We have a motion. Do I have a second on the amended ordinance 05-2021?
Second.
Very good. Any discussion on that? Everyone is crystal clear on the amendment, as well as the original ordinance? All right, all in favor of approving the amended ordinance 05-2021, Amendment to Community Village Zone, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay? Very good. Next, we have up for approval the Fifth Amendment to the amended and restated Development Rights and Responsibilities Agreement for Meads Crossing. Let's begin with a discussion. Would anyone have anything they wish to say? Councilman Haines?
So I am not in favor of the Fifth Amendment to the DARA for Meads Crossing. I believe that going by, I don't want to say the bare minimum parameters, but to say that, okay, the max could be 150 square feet, because that's the largest without a building permit, I'm not really sure that speaks to what Tonny Town wants to be at its best or putting its best foot forward. From the beginning, I've questioned why pursue community village designation if it's merely going to be like all the other developments, just smaller land parcels. It seems like that's not really keeping with what a community village is. So that's, that's why I'm not in favor, is because I'm thinking of the intent, the definition of a community village, and I feel like it keeps morphing to just be like any other neighborhood in which the parcels are larger, thus it's easier to have a shed and to have other items on the property. Previously, I've shared concern about the lay of the land, the topography of the yards, the shape of the lots. I don't believe they're conducive to, to outbuildings or sheds. Previously, I had mentioned possibly dropping to 80, but this evening, I'm just going to say in general, I'm not in favor of it. I believe we, as a town council, back in the day, maybe for families, we'd keep photo albums of memories, and that would be the family history, the lives. Nowadays, maybe it's a shutterfly or online portfolio. Tonight, this is a snapshot of Tonny Town, and so what do we want this snapshot to look like in terms of where we're going to be three, five, seven, 10 years down the road? If it matters for us to designate certain areas with certain definitions, then I believe we should follow through and maintain the integrity of those definitions. But if that's not important to us as a town, the snapshot is then not that vital, I suppose. And so it will be what it will be.
I appreciate that. I've spoken on a few occasions now of the intended aesthetic of a community village and how far we seem to be moving away from that aesthetic. And so I appreciate your words, and I'll say from my personal non-voting standpoint, I'm in agreement with you, that this was clearly stated upfront for that development, that these buildings were not permitted. They went forward anyway with community village, and now they want it to change. That's my opinion. I appreciate your words. I'll open up, anyone else like to discuss?
I guess I have a few thoughts if I could, and Councilman Haines, I thank you very much for that, you know, very poignant and eloquent defense of community village standards. I really do appreciate the input. I would, I guess, want to point out too as well that, you know, it's more than just sheds going in. There are other things which would determine what a community village is, right? Additionally, this isn't a, this isn't something that we're pulling out of a vacuum. This isn't something that we're just deciding to do at random. There has been a, I guess, a prevailing request on the part of a number of, I guess, residents of that area, that they do want to see sheds, or they want to be able to have a shed to store things in. And then in addition to that, I guess the other point that I would make is going back a few meetings, and Jay, you can correct me if I'm wrong about this. A homeowners association can be more restrictive than, what is it, the city cannot be, the city can be, okay, let me rephrase that. The homeowners association can be more restrictive than the city about what they do or don't want to see. So if the city says, you know, sheds are permissible, the HOA can still come in and say, "No, we don't want sheds within this development." So even though tonight we go ahead and push, if this does pass tonight, if we do push this through tonight, and even though we say sheds not exceeding 120 square feet in area shall be permitted, the homeowners association could still come along and say, "Well, no, we want to be more restrictive than this." And so in my mind, you know, going off of that idea of community village and local control, you know, and I'm a firm believer in having as local control as possible, the homeowners association might be in a better position to determine in this circumstance that a shed is or is not something that they want to see under their own auspices. And at least for the moment, that's, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Might you have numbers of those people that have requested sheds of the total? Because five out of 300 would be 1.67%, which I hope that would not determine our vote this evening.
No, I'm not quite sure of that.
Thank you.
All right, any other comments? All right, I'll entertain a motion, and please specify.
I make a motion to approve the Fifth Amendment to the Amendment and Restated Development Rights and Responsibilities Agreement for Meads Crossing.
And do I have a second?
Second?
All right, with a motion from Councilman Haines, second by Mayor Portem Vigliotti. Is there any further discussion on the topic? All right, hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, say nay?
Nay.
I got three to two in favor. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Very good. All right, moving on to Resolution 2021-18, Water Allocation for October 2021. And I don't believe much discussion is necessary, so I'll open it up for a motion.
Motion to approve the water allocation for October 2021.
And a second, please.
Second.
And now any discussion on the water allocation as presented to you this evening? All right, hearing none on the motion by Mayor Portem Vigliotti and the second from Councilman Fuller. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed, say nay? Very good. Last up for adoption this evening, we have Resolution 2021-19 regarding paper alleys. I'm going to ask Mr. Weeprich if he'll give us just a final summary on this.
This is off of Carroll Heights Road. The subdivision plat indicated school lane to be deeded to the city. That deed was never executed, so the property, the strip that's known as school lane, actually was still owned by the individuals who originally subdivided the land. One of the adjacent property owners actually has a contract of sale signed by that individual that was never recorded because of the reference on the plat indicating the property was to be deeded to the city, which of course never happened. So in this case, we do have someone who has expended funds to acquire the property and then ran into, I suppose, a technicality that stopped that from going through. And we have spoken to the other adjacent property owner whose driveway actually encroaches on this paper street, and provided they are insured of access to that property with the driveway, they don't have any, any desire to have half of the property as long as their driveway is protected.
Okay, let's start with some discussion on this topic. Open to anything?
Something, I guess I'll, I can kick things off, Mr. Mayor, if you'll permit me. I really don't have an issue with, you know, ceding surplus land. I guess my, my question is, do we have any idea how much of this exists around the city in any, any capacity?
I hate to say a lot, but it comes up rather often, and there are always little teeny things like this. They're not parcels. They're always roads. Or, for example, just to give you off the top of my head, the alley that's over here between the gym and the neighboring property, there's some question the city has an interest in that, and that's always comes up, should the city maintain it or not, and things like that.
If you recall, this was tackled not too long ago with the hitchman when they wanted to expand. There is a stretch of property intended to be a road at some point that never was. They had interest in it. It was decided that, no, we weren't going to grant that interest to them. A lot of the thinking then, I think, was about the precedent that it sets, and how many people discover these and will then come to the city asking for these properties. Personally, I think, I understand the easement and everything, but in some capacity, we are giving away the end of someone's driveway, because their neighbor wants that paper alley. That's kind of how I view it. Further discussion from council? Or feel free to make a motion and specify your motion.
I'm just trying to collect my thoughts for a minute here. I wanted to, I do want to ask a little more about the, the issue as a whole. I mean, this is, what, the first request we've had since the hitchman request?
I believe so.
Is it?
This has been a continuing request from this individual that may have predated the hitchman, and we have just not followed up.
But didn't make its way to the council.
And the issue, the issue in general, not, not on your subject, but related to that, is people say, "Yes, the city, we want you to give that to us, and we want you to do the work, city, to give it to us." Well, that involves deed work, title work. I mean, it's complicated things. And so that's where this one in the past was, we're not going to involve any of our time and money. So this individual actually hired his own attorney to do all the things that would make it easy to make this happen. Most people don't, and that's, that's why this is, when I say drug on, it kind of got more intense on his part to make this happen.
So on that note, is it, would it be possible or even plausible to perhaps enact some kind of methodology for dealing with these as they arise? That, that, you know, when somebody does say, "I, you know, want this paper alley, I want this piece of property, deeded back to me," that there is a process and like, I guess you could call it some mechanism for what has to occur, that they have to be the ones to hire the attorney, they have to be able to demonstrate their interest in it, they have to be able to provide us with the documentation, but then they also have to meet a number of requirements, like it couldn't cut somebody off from access to a road or something.
I think, I'm, I'm going to cut you off there, because that's kind of on a tangent that can be discussed later. I think we need to deal with the topic at hand before we look at future changes to how we handle things.
This is not unusual, in the fact that you dealt with the hitchman in this one, but it's actually the converse that we get most of the time. I'll give you my alley story over here again. They say, "The city must have an interest, so we want you to maintain it."
Right.
It's, it's not that we want to take care of it. It's, it serves everybody, but the city says, "Well, we don't have any interest. It wasn't deeded to us." And they're like, "Well, we'll do whatever it takes to make sure you have it so that you can maintain it," and then that becomes a bigger problem. The mechanism you asked, not about how we would decide, but without getting too lawyerly, when you put the plat together before you build the roads, you're dedicating it, okay? I mean, it all starts with a D. "I'm dedicating this road to you." When it's all said and done and the road is built, they deed it to us. In the old times, you do all the work up front and everybody, that's the glamorous part, and then when they build it, you never follow up. We do that now. The issue that you have is, there is a court case that says when something is dedicated to the city, even if it's not deeded to the city, we could take steps to own it. And we've done that on several occasions. So it's a case-by-case thing, and there's a way that the city can own it more fully, but we don't even want to do that, because why do we want to own little pieces of parcels than that we, that people say, "We got to mow it, and we got to maintain it," and things like that? That's typically the rationale.
Thank you very much. It makes perfect sense.
So what is the default status currently of this paper alley? Like, who does care for it, or?
Generally, these are cared for by the neighbors, primarily because the aesthetically, they don't want it to impact their property values. I know there are a couple in town where that is the case. The neighbors will take care of it, sometimes alternating, sometimes whatever. Usually, it's the case of this one assumes that one owns it or vice versa, and the actual status isn't known to many people.
They, they use it like it's theirs. In this situation, he parks his camper on it, and if you drove by, you wouldn't think it wasn't his, because it's not really ours either. And the trick is, again, without getting too deep into the property law, if this were between two private individuals and you kept using the property and acted like it was yours, you'd be able to use the doctrine of adverse possession to make it yours if you went through the step, but you can't adverse possession from a government. So it's, he uses it, but it's not really his.
Right, but he does use it, and he uses the back half for his camper. The front half is the driveway for the neighboring property, the entrance to their driveway.
So potentially, if we granted it to the family with the camper, then if the person wanted to, they could cut off the home from the road?
In theory. Now, in here, we say that they have to ensure that there is an easement or right-of-way for them. You're talking about the current property owners. You could have future property owners where you create a dispute between neighbors, where they say, "I bought it, I own it, I don't acknowledge that easement," and then you create a civil issue between two property owners. Is that always a possibility?
Always.
Right. It could happen with this one. I mean, it's...
Because, I mean, it's very weird in this situation. It's not like we own it, own it.
Right.
We only have some type of interest because it's on the deed. If we owned it, owned it, and gave it to a person, it'd be much more solid, but there could be an issue down the road, because all we're doing in essence is saying, "We're out. Here you go. We're out. You may be getting something from us, you may be not, but the city is out." So if we do not pass this resolution this evening and things are the status quo, then that potential for dispute down the road would not exist, because it would still be in this limbo realm. Granted, we may need to take care of it if both parties decided they were hands-off. As is. Worst-case scenario. Right.
So what's in front of you this evening is first declaring it surplus property, that we have no interest in it, and then providing a quitclaim to the property owners who are requesting the property. That's what's up for decision this evening. Is there any other discussion?
Does that go together?
That is all in one resolution here, yes.
So we can't just say, "We have no interest in it. Do what you want," and leave it at that? We have to say, "We have no interest."
We would say, "We believe we have some interest. We're declaring that interest surplus," and we...
And period.
Period.
Can we do that?
But it wouldn't, it wouldn't change, it wouldn't change the status, because he would need some record in the land records that would take us out of it, and that's the quitclaim deed.
Right.
So you don't get around that if you want to do it.
Right. We, we must complete Parts A and B both if you want this to occur.
Yeah, I want to just say...
That's a good question. Right. That's, that was a good thought, actually. I liked that. All right.
Okay.
If anyone wishes to make a motion, please do so and specify accordingly.
I don't mean to hold things up, but I do have one more question before we get to that.
Yes, sir.
I don't mean to sound ignorant, but may I assume that both property owners have been consulted, and do they agree that this is the best course of action?
Property, the neighboring property... Property, the neighboring property is a landlord tenant situation, I believe. The property owner was spoken to, and they were not particularly bothered by it. Is that correct?
They were agreeable.
They were agreeable.
Provided they, their driveway access was protected.
Okay. Of which I don't feel we can accurately protect. But that's-
Well, and that was going to be my next question, going off of what Councilman Haynes asked. So if there was a dispute that arose over that, how would that be adjudicated? I mean, obviously, we would not have an interest-
In civil court.
Civil court?
Yeah.
For it to be done properly, there would be a deed of easement executed for the adjacent property owner for the benefit of the adjacent property to, to preserve that, that driveway access. And it would, there would be an exhibit, a drawing that would show the portion that they were allowed to, to use for their driveway. That would be the basis for them to continue and, and all, I mean, if done properly, again, it would be, you know, for successors, heirs, and so on, so that, you know, it runs with the property. That doesn't mean that 30 years from now, there's not an, you know, there could be a neighbor dispute and nobody can find that paper. Or maybe nobody remembers there's such a thing.
Right.
So I mean, there, there is risk associated with it, but we, we run into that with things like using common driveways throughout the city as it is. And, you know, as time goes on and people, people's recollection or knowledge of, of official documents and records fades, we run into these situations.
So on the adverse, if we retained our interest in this and some dispute arose, we would necessarily, what, be involved in whatever that dispute was?
It, it's typical for folks to try to bring the city into those disputes, even when it's, it's a civil matter, you know, between two adjacent property owners.
We had that happen, I don't remember the development, but we owned, we needed the stormwater management right of way, and the property owners owned the, you know, the townhouses, what I'm talking about.
You're talking about the fences?
Portland Street.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes. Right.
And we said, we can't help you. The city deeded at that point in time, if you recall. The city somehow had ownership of their common area behind Cortland Street and took the efforts to deed that to people. Everything was fine then. And now, years later, they come back and say, well, I can't get a mower or a member to my backyard because so and so owns the ground outside and they won't let me. And-
Right.
City, how can you come and help us? And we kept saying, it's a civil matter.
Right.
Even though we created the problem.
Yep.
Right. We created the problem.
So I, I guess maybe the final question to this point of discussion, if we retain the interest in the property, does that necessarily diminish the propensity for a problem?
Not necessarily. Let's see. Does it diminish the propensity for the problem? No. We don't have an issue and really can't be forced to do anything because our interest is only a dedicated interest. So it will stay as it is. Now, I guess the property owner could say, I'm not going to mow it, I'm not going to use it. But we don't own it, so we don't really have the right. The property owner is, I'll make the name up like Joe Smith, long dead. Okay? So that's the issue. And they can't go back and get them to sign the necessary deeds and things.
Now, what also makes this unique, as was spoken about earlier, is that years ago, this property owner tracked down, I guess, a descendant of the original developer, property owner, and had a contract of sale, but did not follow through on a deed. That makes this a little bit different.
It makes him have an equitable interest. And we are going to do law, right? An equitable interest-
Right.
Because he has some interest he was going to purchase, but he does not have a legal interest in the property because he never affected a deed to make the contract of sale. It'd be like you said, you wanted to buy somebody's house, but you never went through with it and got a deed recorded in your name. It's not your house.
Right.
It's still their house.
You paid someone money for the house, but you never got the deed.
And so, again, that's between him and his people. And he still would have had an issue where we were on the title somehow.
Right.
So it makes it a little bit more in the fact that this guy really wants this and has taken a lot of time and effort to make this happen, and will probably take care of it. It's not going to be used to go anywhere because there's nowhere to go behind it. If we can fix the issue up front with the neighbor, which is generally addressed, but not specifically addressed of how it's going to happen. But the problem is the precedent that you set, and do you create problems down the road by your actions?
And that's always the thing that we need to consider, is what precedents we are setting in the decisions we make in these chambers. With that, I'll entertain a motion, and you may specify that motion for me.
Can, point of order, I guess maybe a point of order question. Sorry.
Yes, sir. Yep.
So is there any absolute necessity that this gets passed this month?
No.
All right. So I'd like to make a motion to table this for November. I would like to give this some more thought if everybody else is agreeable to that. I certainly have taken the points about weighing whether or not we're creating immediate or future problems or one way or the other.
All right. We have a motion to table from Mayor Protem Vigliati. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
All right. Motion to table from Mayor Protem Vigliati with a second from Councilman Haynes. Is there any discussion on the motion to table this until the November meeting? Okay.
Joe, do you just need time to make a decision based on discussion today, or are you seeking more information from council or staff or whoever?
I think probably, to be honest, all, all of the above. When I came in here this evening, and, you know, just to be completely honest, I mean, I figured I was going to support this. But then through the course of the discussion this evening, plus the fact that, you know, because it's a combined meeting, we would necessarily have to take a vote on this unless we tabled it. You know, based on the discussion this evening, I would like to consider this a little bit more. I mean, everybody who has spoken this evening has made, you know, good points. And, you know, I certainly want to take those into consideration in my own decision-making process, if that makes sense.
Okay. I just wondered, were you seeking more information? And if so, from whom?
Frankie.
I may have to ask him. He's a very good pup about these things.
All right. All in favor of tabling Resolution 2021-19 Paper Alley's Until November, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. All right. We will see that show up again next month. Next, we'll go to Mr. Weeprich for a city manager report. Sir, what do you have for us this evening?
Okay, just a couple of things. An update on capital improvement program and the American Recovery Program funds. We've updated the draft capital improvement program for all the DPW areas, really focusing on, on water, sewer, and stormwater infrastructure because those are the low-hanging fruit for the ARPA funds. And we have about three and a half million dollars' worth of projects envisioned for the ARPA spending. We may add an additional I&amp;I project that is a relining replacement of some of our older terracotta sewer pipe that allows a lot of stormwater to get into the system that, that we then treat at the treatment plant. So that causes compliance problems and costs us more in chemicals and so on. And our IT staff has been working on a citywide GIS system. They've been working along with Public Works to inventory and geolocate all of our sewer manholes. Now, they're just using GPS on a cell phone, so it's not the most accurate that you can get. But with what we have, our IT folks have cobbled together a rather impressive GIS system using open source data and scraping things from the county's GIS system as they can. And we should have, by the end of this week, all the lengths of terracotta pipe that are throughout the city that we know of. And with that information, we'll probably come up with one or two more relining or replacement projects to add to the ARPA funding list, the ARPA funding list. I noted in my report that the, the regulations for the October 31st reporting were not finalized, which was making Barry and I kind of nervous. And just yesterday, on the MML site, I found that there has been an addendum that was released on September 30th, that now for non-entitlement units of government, or NEUs, which is us, the project expenditure report will now be due on April 30th, 2022. So it looks like they needed a little more time to get the regulations in place, too, which is a bit of a blessing for us because trying to solidify a project list and report that was really making me nervous for the, the end of this month. So we are going to keep the heat on to come up with that list and finalize it. And I know that Mayor Wance has some other potential projects that he'd like to see included, so we'll be having some more discussions on that. But we got a little bit of, of breather on that next reporting. The Sewell annexation, a little bit of an update. The Sewells have come in and signed, but the contract purchaser has not yet signed the annexation agreement. So I believe they're having some discussions on, on that side of the table as to whether or not they are really ready to move forward as, as the annexation agreement was drafted. So we're basically maintaining that we can't commit a certain amount of capacity to the property that's not even in the city yet. And the contract purchaser, you know, potential developer, is not ready to write a big check without there being a little more commitment as to what they are going to be able to do with the property. So a little bit of an impasse there. But it sounds like within the, the other side, there's some, some discussion that needs to happen to get everybody on the same page over there before we can meet as a larger group. Moving on to the Tavanyan Terrace stormwater retrofit, the relocated waterline was connected. Service was interrupted for about four, four hours on Saturday. We did have a couple complaints, but all in all, it, it went smoothly. And so they should be moving away from that end, that King's Drive end of the project by the end of this month. So we're cautiously optimistic that the sidewalk that was torn up for the construction entrance there is going to be, the curb and gutter and sidewalk will be repoured, and the, you know, pedestrian access back to the middle school will be restored properly and won't be a gravel walkway for too much longer. And at that point, then, work's going to shift over more toward the, the Supreme Court portion of the pond, which is the little dead-end stub off of Tavanyan Terrace. So work is ongoing. Like, like a lot of contractors, they're stretched very thin. They've had crews getting pulled off to go on to other jobs with tighter deadlines, and, and that's just making that much more challenging for this project to stay on, on, on schedule. But, but it's going smoothly so far, and that's about all that I've got.
All right. Any questions on the city manager report from the council? Or any questions on the departmental reports? All right. Hearing none. Thank you, Mr. Weeprich. We'll move on to Mr. Gallow. Do you have a legal report for us this evening?
I don't, but I would like to thank you for your support and your understanding. And it is great to be back face to face with you, especially after my illness. And I appreciate the understanding of the backlog that I have and the work I need to do. So we'll be ramping back up. It's good to be back in the game. Appreciate it.
It is absolutely wonderful to see you here this evening.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Although I still get to see you on the screen, too, so that's-
I, I always hesitate to wonder what that really looks like from my point of view.
All right. With very little report, I will ask council, though, if they have questions for Mr. Gallow on his report. No. Very good. We shall move on. Under new business, up for approval is the monthly financial report. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Very good. That is a motion I assume to approve, correct? Thank you. And a second, please. Very good. We have a motion to approve from Councilman Foster with a second from Councilman Hand. Is there any discussion on the monthly financial report? All right. Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Very good. And similarly, for the accounts payables, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Very good. And a second, please.
Second.
With a motion from Councilman Haynes and a second from Councilman Hand, is there any discussion on the accounts payables as they are presented to you this evening? All right. Hearing no discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. All right. Next up, we have a ward of water storage tank long-term maintenance plan. Let me scroll through.
Actually, we are going to hold off on that until next month. I did not realize that was still on here. We do not have a recommendation yet from the city engineer and Public Works.
All right. With that, we will put that on hold. We'll scratch that from the agenda for the evening. All right. Next, we have special event approval for Triangle Recovery Club Kickball Tournament on October 30th at Memorial Park. We'll begin, if there's any discussion on this, before motion. Okay. This has gone through all of the appropriate channels. Public Works likes it, Police Department likes it. I assume Parks and Rec likes it if it's here. So I will entertain a motion and specify if you are requesting approval.
So moved. No, please go ahead.
I have to say, motion to approve?
Very good. Do I have a second to that?
Second.
All right. We have motion to approve from Councilman Fuller, second from Mayor Protem Vigliati. Is there any further discussion on the special event approval in front of you? All right. With no further discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Very good. Lastly, I would like to bring up to council a request. We have been approached by a company interested in the Creamery building with a rather impressive plan. At the same time, it is our building, and we do have to request proposals to do so. And I'm asking the council if they were, if they will permit staff to put out an RFP, requesting proposals once again for what to do with the Creamery building. The intention being that they would purchase the building and develop it according to an agreement made with the city. Are we interested in pursuing that at this time?
Do we?
Sorry about that.
Okay. I want to back up a little bit.
Yes, ma'am.
You say you're putting out an RFP. Do we have anything in place that says, you know, what can be done with this built?
The RFP-
What is, yeah, explain to me.
So, so let's start there. What we would be requesting of interested parties would be, first off, what they would pay for the property, what they would do with it pursuant to its zoning, which is currently restricted industrial zone. And then also proof that they have the ability to follow through assets and past projects.
Will there be a timetable?
There will be a timetable. What we ask, what I believe we spoke about, Mr. Weeprich, you may have to correct me, is that it would be open by July 1st of 2023.
Mr. Mayor, I don't mean to interrupt, but if you want, I can read some of the terms and incentives that we have laid out.
Sure. You have it there?
I do.
Excellent.
I'm surprised this will help answer some of your questions. But bulleted, the proposed use of the property must totally or substantially preserve the existing building. The proposed use of the property must be allowed under the current zoning, which is light industrial. The city cannot and does not guarantee that any special exception will be issued by the Board of Appeals and will not accept a proposal that requires an exception. A fully licensed business must be in operation by July 1st, 2023. In order to realize the full benefit of the incentives detailed herein, a business must continue in operation for five years from July 1st, 2023. If a business ceases operation before June 30th, 2028, the building owner will be required to pay to the city a sum equal to all rebates received and will forfeit any authorization of costs and fees. The incentives offered in this RFP are non-transferable and shall cease upon transfer of the property, at which time the building owner will be required to pay to the city a sum equal to all rebates received, and any amortization of the costs and fees will be forfeited. And finally, the city reserves the right to negotiate additional terms with a successful applicant.
Okay, that answers my question.
Clear? Okay. Clear? Okay.
Now it's clear.
So the intention being, if you will allow us to advertise for proposals, we would come back for the council to declare the building surplus. That does not tie you into anything, but it does allow us to move forward as needed. And then the proposals received will come before council. Also, they'll go through staff, Mr. Weprick and Mr. Mishi, with their recommendation as well. And you can determine if you wish to grant it, or you don't have to. You wouldn't be tied to doing so. But I think the proposal we have received so far, I think, is impressive. But we need to do our due diligence and make sure that any other possibilities are entertained as well. Mr. Weprick, do you have anything to add to the discussion?
I think that's a very fair summary.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Gallow, do you see any issues with what we're anticipating?
I'd like to read the RFP because the only thing I can think of is a repeat of the pharmacy building.
That's exactly what we're trying to avoid. Yes. Right. Nor was I, but I don't like it.
So I do not want a repeat of the pharmacy building.
Yes. You will get that before it goes out. The intention is, we want them to stay in business for at least five years, or any possible credits we've given them are going to have to come back to us. I think it's only appropriate to do so and have that sort of expectation. If you would like to see a copy of the RFP before it officially goes out, I can share it with the council once it's approved. Very good. Since you've already, in theory, approved it this evening, then you can give your nod over email when you see it in that case. Is that correct, Mr. Gallow? There's no open meetings violations?
We didn't vote, right?
No, we have not voted, sir.
When you do that, then yes.
Yes, that's correct. Yep. The intention is, with a vote tonight, to move forward. Mayor Portem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just two brief questions. If we were to declare the old Creamery building to be surplus, does that last only as long as the period for the RFP? Or will declaring that building surplus last beyond the effective dates of the RFP? And how will that affect, I guess, our ownership of the building?
Well, that will be determined by the resolution that declares it surplus.
We've changed how I thought about it, okay? In the past, we declared things surplus. You have to have 20 days' notice, and then we had you do things because you've done that in the past. And as you know, with the paper alley, I thought it would be better if we do what we're going to do and say it's surplus, and then we give the 20 days' notice, and then it becomes effective. That way, if you don't do it, it doesn't ever become surplus and become effective.
Right.
So that's how it is. The law on that doesn't say you have to tell what you're going to do with it. It just says that it's surplus. So we accomplished that all at the same time.
Thank you. And then my second question is, you know, if we do proceed with the RFP this evening, can we make that conditional upon legal review? That way, you have a chance to see before, you know, it goes out?
I think it was going to be the staff.
That's the intention. Yeah, it's...
Well, I mean, does that need to be part of the motion?
I don't think...
I don't believe so. It's in the minutes at this point that that has been specified.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
I appreciate that. Is there any other discussion we'd like to have before I ask you to make a motion to approve? Would someone like to make that motion to approve?
I'd like to make the motion to approve.
And I'll second.
All right. We have a motion from Councilman Haynes, a second from Councilman Fuller. Is there any further discussion on this topic? I know personally, I'm very excited at the prospect of that Creamery building finally becoming something other than an eyesore. So with no further discussion, all in favor of advertising RFPs for the Creamery building, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Very good. That ends our business for the evening. We'll move into our council member reports. Understanding that it's five days earlier than you would normally give them, we'll begin with Councilman Haynes.
Thanks. I have nothing too exciting to report. One thing I think that is worth mentioning is Director Mishi is pursuing a small project regarding signage. So some of it is functional, you know, kind of highlighting parking a little bit better. And then other things are a little more historical and educational, things like plaques and buffing up stuff that have historical notations. But other than that, nothing too exciting to report, so that's all from me.
All right. Thank you, sir. Councilman Foster, do you have anything for us?
As the city manager reported, we did meet and discuss the ARBA funds and made some suggestions, all of which deal with Public Works, water, and such. And the mayor wants to see some items added to that list. The only concerns we have going forward is that, as I'm sure, you know, everybody has read in the news, most people are kind of slow to spend their ARBA money. Our concern is that everybody is going to decide at once. The contractors are going to be overbooked, and we'll be forever getting these things done.
They're going to be overbooked or money hungry, one or the other.
Oh, yes. So we will move ahead as quickly as possible and try to get these things on the book and at least committed. We do have until, what is it, the end of 20...
25, right?
Two... No, the commitment date.
The commitment date, I'm sorry.
Is...
That, I believe, is the one that just got pushed back.
Yeah, okay. That's the one that just got pushed back. And then you have till '24 to spend the money.
I think '25.
'25, that got... Okay. But we think we probably will need all of that time.
I think you're right.
And that's all I have.
Very good. Councilman Hand, let's go to you.
Not a tremendous amount. In process, and it looks like, moving forward, we have a new business that'll be popping up shortly, an esports, which seems like that could be a good outlet for youth. That is something that often appears on discussion boards about opportunities. So that's it.
All right. Councilman Fuller?
I wanted to make sure we were on the line. So the photography contest for the parks is ongoing until October 31st. We have gotten quite a few entries. This Saturday is the Harvest Fest from 11:00 to 3:00. There's going to be the Beer Garden, a band, lots of vendors, food. I will be there selling Christmas stuff to raise money for more Christmas stuff. Yeah.
Can't you just use the Christmas stuff?
No. It's indoor Christmas stuff. I need outdoor Christmas stuff. The Parks and Rec meeting is next Wednesday, October 13th, at 6:30 p.m. We'll go to the end of October. October 29th is our trunk or treat. It's from 8:00 to 9:00. Before that, we're going to have the parade from the police station. That starts at 5:30. So they will traipse down the road to the park. October 30th is going to be Tales of Tawny Town at Memorial Park from 2:00 to 5:00. And then obviously, October 31st, our trick-or-treating will be from 6:00 to 8:00.
Excellent. As for my report, no. Mayor Portem Vigliati.
Judy, I had one question. I thought I saw in Lorena's report that they didn't know about whether the food collection was going to be at both Kenny's and Food Lion.
Is that the one for December?
That's... Yes, Police Department for December. They know it will be at Kenny's. They're unsure of Food Lion.
Okay. That was my question.
Got a little bit more time.
Right. Mayor Portem Vigliati, do you have a report for us this evening?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do.
Excellent.
So I have the departmental report for the Tawny Town Police Department. I'll begin with the Training and Education Report for the month of September 2021. Annual in-service training online through Police One Academy continues to be ongoing. Over the course of September, officers trained in traffic stops and safety in 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, which are five one-hour blocks of training. They engaged in best practices in dangerous canine encounters. Supervisors engaged in leadership classes 5, 6, 7, 8, which are presented in four one-hour blocks. Leadership in law enforcement and generational differences for law enforcement. In terms of overall training on September 22nd, the patrol rifle operators conducted their biannual qualifications. In terms of awards, Corporal Schultz was awarded the MPC TC Instructor of the Year for the Tawny Town Police Department. With regards to specialized training, from September 9th through 10th, Patrolman First Class Zachary Myers engaged in First Responder Mental Health and Wellness Conference. On September 13th, Corporal Schultz and Senior Patrol Officer Sacadalis engaged in a class for TASER CEW instructor certification. On September... Between September 13th and 17th, Corporal Schaefer participated in FBI LIDA Supervisor Leadership Institute. On September 21st, Officer Delospedale engaged in the Seal the Deal Criminal Investigation Seminar. Between September 27th and 28th, Patrolman First Class Marshall and Patrolman First Class Dakota Myers engaged in the NCTC Mid-Level Narcotics Investigations. Between September 29th and 30th, Senior Patrol Officer Sacadalis engaged in a class for Current Crime Trends Seminar. As far as the base report, the total number of dispatched or generated calls for service in September numbered 438. The total citations issued numbered 73. The total number of warnings issued were 101. The total number of adult arrests were 18. The total number of juvenile arrests were four. Of special note from the Department for September, the chief, the major, along with Patrolman First Class Romero and Officer Chesney were very happy to represent the Tawny Town Police Department at this year's September 11th memorial ceremony. It is of utmost importance to the department that we always remember the courageous acts that occurred on this day in 2001 and always remember the numerous lives that were lost. Also, in the evening on September 11th, Tawny Town Relay for Life held their annual... I should say, at this point, it's a biannual because it's been two years since the last event that they were able to hold because of coronavirus. But we wanted to extend our sincerest thanks to the mayor for saying a number of very good words at their banquet ceremony that evening. And also to Corporal Brian Schaefer, who is with us here tonight, for all of his work and dedication to Relay for Life, including leading the survivors' car parade around Tawny Town. It was something that the committee was really trying to determine how they could best showcase survivors this year. And without Brian, it would not have been possible. So thank you very much for that, Brian. And last but not least, I also wanted to note that the mayor, myself, and members of the police department were present for the Tawny Town Volunteer Fire Company's mini carnival, which, of course, had been postponed due to the pandemic. I want to take a moment to relate a personal story this evening from the carnival. And in particular, I want to commend Officers Steve Sacadalis and Zach Myers. So we, the three of us, were over by the entrance to the carnival one of those evenings. And we met a number of new residents, all who had moved into Meads Crossing. And every single person that we met, who was new to town, had nothing but compliments and positive things to say about this town and how we conduct our business. And I'm going to leave names out of this as a matter of politess and for respective privacy. But we met a mother who had three foster kids with her, all of whom had special needs. And she brought them over to meet myself and the two officers, Steve and Zach. And these children were a little hesitant, a little uncertain about how to approach the officers. And so we explained to them that, no, these officers are good guys. These are good people. And Steve and Zach stepped up, and they said, "Look, anytime you are in trouble, anytime you need anything, don't hesitate to come to us. We will take care of you. We'll help you." And because of their compassion and their outreach, within a couple of minutes, these kids had warmed up to them completely. Steve and Zach showed them the inside of one of the squad cars, and these kids were absolutely floored. They were so happy, and they were so completely changed by this experience with our officers. And so I want to compliment Steve and Zach for their professionalism and their compassion. And to note that, you know, while something like this, you know, with everything going on in the world right now and how crazy things are across certain parts of the country, you know, something like this, you know, somebody might consider inconsequential, but to these kids, this meant the world. This was a totally changing experience for them. And I know that every single day, the officers in our departments are... They have encounters like these, where they're reaching out to the public. They're building trust. They're reaching out to people. And I think that speaks volumes and is certainly a testament, again, to the professionalism, the capacity, and the sense of community that our police department has. And I just simply cannot compliment them enough for what they've done. And, you know, if you ever have the experience or the ability to see our officers in person interacting with the public, it really is a heartwarming thing. And so I want to thank our police officers for everything that they do for us. And that's it for me this evening, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. I want to echo a little bit of that and then follow up with another echo. But firstly, it is absolutely refreshing to see the dedication to further training for our officers. I felt like for many years, we did not see that. What little training was occurring, I think, was simply to put a rubber stamp on a piece of paper. And now we're seeing better training. We're seeing better commitment by our officers. And while we've always had police who have been very engaged with the community, I think even more so now. It's their presence. Everyone sees them, and everyone can talk to them. Some of it's just, you know, social media, but a lot of it is when they're out there, people feel safe and people respect what they do and how they do things. And I think that goes for a lot of the leadership down there in our police department. I think the right decision was made to have Chief Etzler step up and to have Major Mitchell join the department. And department-wide in the city, not just the police, I have to say, the department heads are doing an amazing job of really turning a lot of things around. I'm seeing activities. I'm seeing progress in these reports. I just... We have an amazing staff of people. And a lot of that comes to Mr. Weprick for his supervision over them throughout the week and day-to-day. I can rest easy and focus on my full-time employment, knowing that he's taking care of these things, and he lets me know, you know, as things happen or what needs my input. But for the most part, he does a tremendous job down there in taking care of the staff. So I thank you for everything you're doing. And to all the department heads, if you're watching, I appreciate everything you're doing. I see the impact that you're making. And I hear it as part of my report. I hear from not just residents, but from people across the state. Accolades for the city, for this council, and for this staff, for what's going on here and how things have turned around. And we're viewed very differently now than we were three or four years ago. I think that's a lot to be said about the changes that have been made and the people we have in the right positions. But with that, I'll go into my report now. We have a business breakfast coming up on Friday, Friday morning, at the Bowling Alley. For the council, we have Fall Conference next week, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday. It's fairly close to home, right down in Ellicott City. The Carroll County Chapter of MML and the Frederick County Chapters are the hosts of this conference. So you're probably going to hear a lot about dinners that we're hosting and such. This chapter is one of the big sponsors of this conference. On Tuesday, Leadership Carroll, part of the Carroll County Chamber of Commerce, is coming to Tawny Town, where a luncheon will be hosted at Antrim 1844. Director Jay Mishi and myself will be in attendance, welcoming them to Tawny Town and telling them all the amazing things the city has done and will do. The Fireman's Carnival, I think, was awesome. Thank you so much to the Fire Department for putting that together. I know it was abbreviated. I know it wasn't everything that people thought it could be. But in my opinion, it was amazing. It's that one closer step to getting back to normal. And I hope it was successful for the Fire Department. But at the very least, it was a great opportunity for the community to come back together again. And thank you for all of that. There was a public meeting regarding redistricting that Mayor Portem Vigliati and I attended. We were one of three people in attendance for that public meeting. Took place at the senior center. And the maps that they're considering right now, two of them I'm very okay with in terms of how they keep Tawny Town... Well, excuse me. They put Tawny Town with Union Bridge and New Windsor, which I just believe rightly so. That's who we should be lumped with as opposed to Silver Run and Manchester. So hopefully, if those maps can go through, we'll see a very different county districts for the commissioner election coming up next year. Let's see here. Food Drive was mentioned earlier. Every year, a police department puts on a food drive. It's always extremely successful. I've taken that and put it out to the rest of the Carroll County Chapter, all the other municipalities, and asked them to join along and do a food drive in their municipality at the same time that we're doing ours, making a chapter-wide event a Carroll County-wide event. And that way, no matter where you are in the county, you have a chance to donate food that day to wherever's closest to you. I think it'd be amazing. I didn't do it as a challenge. It's not a contest. It's a way for us to unite the efforts of all of the municipalities in this county to bring food in and distribute it to the appropriate food banks where we can. So more on that, you'll see. I've kind of put Director Jay Mishi in charge of those efforts with the other municipalities. And of course, our police department do a fine job of handling ours on their own. But I think that's all I have tonight. It's refreshing to have long reports. It's refreshing to have long reports because it went 18 months of just nothing happening at all. But with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn for the evening. Do I have a second, please?
Second.
All in favor of adjourning and going home to bed, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Have a great night, all.